Hmm.
All right, uh, we're gonna open up the select board meeting. It's Tuesday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. All members are present and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Uh, conflicts of interest?
I don't think so.
Okay. I may have one when we go over the warrants, but I will abstain or recuse myself. Uh, we're gonna enter, uh, an executive session. Somebody like to make a motion?
Move to enter an executive session in accordance with one MRSA section four oh five sixty real estate.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Uh, I will move that we, it's the executive session. Um, I'm looking for it. Maybe I should go to the minutes. Executive session, uh, one MRSA four oh five six C on real estate.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, no action to be taken on that. Uh, looking at the meeting minutes.
Henry?
Well, you, you wanna go on to just about them putting it on the agenda for next week?
Oh, sure. Uh, yeah, so no formal action, but yes.
Yeah, there's no action today on it. We have, uh, the, the issues have been raised regarding the town's retention of the one hundred acre wood property, given the statute that was passed effective August twenty twenty four. That requires towns that are retaining foreclosed property to pay excess proceeds over to the prior owner. We've been talking with our lawyers and they've given us the opinion that if we're to retain your property, that's gonna have to be complied with. The town has made the decision to retain the property and so some actions need to be taken. Uh, we've got a pretty full plate tonight and, uh, we just wanted to, 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 to make sure that we're out of an executive session situation, which, which we are. Uh, so we wanna put this on the agenda for next week. There'll be a, a little memo, uh, in the, uh, in with the agenda packet that explains what the situation is. Uh, and, uh, I think we might, you know, that'd be available to anybody that wants it. And if the conservation committee wants it right away, they can have it right away or commissioned. Uh, and then next time we have a meeting, we'll talk about it.
And to be clear, it's not next week.
No, it's the next scheduled, yeah, the next, the next scheduled meeting.
It is next week, actually.
Well, I, I think we, I think we put that one off, but I, but that's, but there's an issue.
Did we on the third?
Yeah, cuz we changed back ways and I don't know if we wanna keep a meeting on the third or not. We can.
Are we going for the?
I was gonna ask that up and.
Okay.
So for this agenda, we set the next scheduled meeting. Then we can hash out what the next meeting is.
Okay, sounds good. Great, thanks. Uh.
I would've been here by myself.
Meeting minutes.
I have only one persnickety question and that is, under the warrants, uh, under B, we're so careful to, um, call who makes the motion and who seconds it. We, we just skipped. Uh, who made the motion or who seconded it for B? That's all.
I see.
I don't know how crucial that is to the importance and accuracy.
Yeah, it should be seconded by somebody or.
Or.
I'll check on that. Thank you.
Yeah, did, did you wanna motion to consider approving it before we do the discussion or discussion first?
Yeah, we can, if a motion would be great.
Okay, well, we will consider approving the select board meeting minutes for May thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All right, discussion. We've got one change to the warrants. Anybody see anything else?
Anything looks good.
All right, so all in favor with that correction or change?
Who seconded that?
Okay. Uh, excellent. Accounts payable.
So just looking at this, uh, you'll see our largest, um, costs were going back through the B and V and that was for a lot of the excise tax that we've been getting in for boats, boat trailers, um, uh, registrations of referrals. We've had a lot of those just this month. And then, uh, you'll see myself and Adam Brooks, uh, down there for reimbursement. That's just because we've had a hiccup with a credit card as far as, uh, there was a late payment on the credit card from a few months ago that was supposed to be reversed. And so I called them about it and they haven't reversed it yet. And so they shut off the credit card. And so I've called them and those are just reimbursements for operating at the end of this. But it's pretty standard.
Uh-oh. Somebody wanna make a motion for that?
Motion, we approve accounts payable number fifty two in the amount of twenty two thousand three hundred and twenty eight dollars sixty seven cents.
Okay.
Uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Move that we approve payroll number fifty one in the amount of ten thousand four hundred and sixty five dollars and seventeen cents.
Okay.
Uh, discussion? All in favor? Okay. Uh, consider approving proposed warrant articles for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six annual town meeting.
Hmm.
Will I bring you down to the article?
I'm looking on the playbook.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, believe it or not, it shows you I didn't read it. I'll tell you about it later.
Uh, do you wanna just go through, um, each article and then, uh, take actions? Well, we don't need to do the, we're starting at eight, is that correct?
Starting for the tenth, uh, that's, oh, starting at article eight, yes.
Yeah, I'm just making sure. We don't, we don't make a, uh.
You can make recommendations or changes to any of the previous articles. So starting at article three, looking at seven point five percent per year, that is, uh, the maximum, uh, percent allowed. Uh, towns would usually, uh, go, the law, the highest percent allowed to incentivize residents to pay their taxes. And so with seven point five percent being the percent that they set, I recommended that and put that in there.
Do we make motions to accept these things? How does that proceed?
Yeah, that's what I'm just trying, well, I don't, the, the board. Yes, we don't.
But again, on the, on the budget items, it has the recommended, you know, the stock board recommendations and the budget committee recommendations. So it seems like you need to have a motion.
So we would have to have a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, in order to have a vote, we have a motion.
Yes.
I, I think you could probably do three through seven all in one group if you wanted to do it at all.
Right, and that's not a recommendation, that's just.
Yeah, that's not a recommendation, but just.
Right.
There, you know, we, we have to approve the warrant and we have to sign it. So.
So we'd have to.
Approve this, you know, one through seven, articles one through seven.
Yep.
Okay, move, we approve articles one through seven, uh, for the annual town meeting warrant for twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Uh, discussion? All right, all in favor? Uh, article eight?
Move, we approve article eight of the town warrant for twenty twenty five.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, I think I'm gonna have to probably vote no on this one. And the reason is because I don't believe we have a sufficient appropriation for the cost of a treasurer. Uh, as I've kind of harped on before. Uh, Shannon, explain to us her rationale for the bookkeeper, which sounded really good to me. Uh, the treasurer's, uh, amount stayed constant at four thousand dollars. That gives a treasurer and tax collector combination of thirty nine thousand one hundred and forty eight dollars. If, I don't believe you can find a competent person to do those two jobs and provide the information that we need for proper governance for that amount of money. That's just my opinion.
And is that what we're offering right now to, is that what we can, can we even talk about that? Is that what we're offering to candidates for that upper position right now?
I don't know that we're offering anything. What do you think?
That's just the max that we have set for it.
That's what she has to work with, given this budget.
Shannon, did you do some research on what's the, I don't wanna say the norm, but what, um, where that thirty nine, one forty eight will fall relative to other towns?
Uh, so yes, I had done that and then I ended up increasing the bookkeeper. Uh, what I had seen in the treasurer and tax collector wages in other towns tended to be, um, at least around thirty to thirty three, thirty five dollars an hour. This is at currently at twenty three point five three dollars per hour. Um, but to increase the bookkeeper cost, so that way we could at least keep someone at twelve, uh, twelve hours a week, uh, to do the accounts payable and payroll processing. I increased that up to the thirteen thousand seven hundred twenty eight.
So, so again, Shannon, the numbers were, the, the, the hourly rate that we have is how much per hour?
So for the bookkeeper, it's twenty two dollars an hour. And for the treasurer or tax collector, it's currently twenty three point five three dollars per hour.
Okay, and what did you say you felt the going rate might be?
Uh, about thirty to thirty five.
Yeah.
So at thirty, what does that anyways at?
Yeah.
Forty nine thousand nine hundred and twenty.
Basically fifty?
Yeah.
Yep.
How much? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Forty nine thousand nine hundred and twenty, about fifty thousand.
With this, while we're thinking about that, with this updated warrant or with this updated budget, I think last week you spoke to a it was like a near a hundred percent, or a hundred thousand dollar decrease, but then there were some additional things that we were putting into the budget. So where are we at now with this?
I'd have to get the overall number. I haven't calculated that yet. Um, we added another ten thousand and for legal, we've added another, um, I highlighted some portions back here. Um, I think it was another um, twenty, about nine hundred thousand dollars in recreation. Um, and I think that was about it. About twelve thousand dollars added.
Okay.
So what would you consider the appropriate amount to allow for the, the treasurer?
Who's the question for?
Right, you see, it's the, it's the, is this them? Well, i- if, if, if you said, if you said fifty thousand dollars is a fair price, then you would wanna raise the treasurer's stipend from four thousand to fifteen thousand. Because when you put that together with the tax collectors' wages, you get thirty five thousand or you get fifty thousand one hundred and forty eight dollars. Um, I have a question that I'm not really sure how, how this works. Let's face it. I mean, if, if we fiddle with this now, do we go back to the, do we go back to the budget committee? And, and, and I, and I don't, I, and I, I think it needs some fiddling, but.
I'm not gonna do any backwards the way you did it this year.
Yeah.
It, it has been done. Budget Committee has made their statement.
Yeah.
That was the time to talk about it.
Uh, well, I mean, it can always go forward and say this, the like board says yes and the budget committee says no, but it would be better if we could do it differently.
We don't have a way to say no.
Yeah. So, uh, one thing is if we, if we are, if we're going to make any changes here or elsewhere, uh, I suppose we could have scheduled a special joint meeting or later in the week and just take care of those, uh, take care of those issues. But if the budget committee did not wanna do that, or the select board did not wanna do that, if either one of us say no, then that's it.
You have time to post it and have a legal meeting, Henry.
Sure, the, the, we, we could have a, we could have a meeting on, on, uh, Thursday or Friday. We've given, posted on the internet, you know, on our, on our website. I believe, I don't, I don't think there's a, there's a minimum requirement. It's reasonable notice.
All right.
The date to schedule or post the warrant will be June third.
Yeah, June third, no, but I, I think, I think, um, uh, he was asking, do we have, do we have time to notice a joint meeting?
Oh.
Uh, yeah.
Without delving into, uh, 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 hiring sort of, um, are these, are, are these numbers, what is being communicated for the position at this point?
Right.
I haven't communicated anything as far as the position. Uh, I've had one interview. I have another one scheduled, um, but no offer since then.
Shannon, on the interview that you had, just generally, what sort of did you think about the candidate?
I thought the candidate was good.
Okay, second question, can we afford her?
No.
There you go.
So increasing the stipend does not have an impact on any of the other lines in here? Is that correct? It won't impact any of the other payroll related items? Health insurance, social security managed, blah, blah, blah.
It would affect, it would affect FICA and it would affect, it would affect FICA and Medicare. It would not affect health insurance cuz it's just one employee who gets the health insurance.
But it would, yeah.
It, it would, there's, there's a labor overhead number that goes on whatever the increase is. It's seven point six two five, something like that.
Right, based on salary.
Yes, of the extra amount. If you increase to ten thousand dollars, that, that, that overhead amount goes up seven hundred and whatever it is, dollars.
And the reason we break it out as a stipend, not wages, is why?
No, well, I think you break it out.
That's because it was, that's the traditional way we handled it.
So I left it for consistency.
Yes.
Is it paid monthly or whatever, or paid on the same schedule as the, as wages or the?
It would be included, yes.
And, and of course, a perfectly acceptable treatment is to say, Henry doesn't know what he's talking about and vote to keep the four thousand dollars.
Well, in, in all honesty, we, we talked about, we talked about what we thought was a good salary if we were gonna combine, um, the positions.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we decided it was a good idea to combine the positions. Um, I don't, uh, obviously, we didn't get to the point at which we said, and therefore, uh, we think we have to make a change in the budget and communicate this and make that happen. That was a step that was skipped.
And currently, the position is being advertised as a combined position.
Correct.
And, and there's no salary in the advertisement?
No.
Well, when you know what it would, what it involved, but it would seem that boosting that somewhat to give us room would make some sense.
So it sounds to me like we either need to have a, a meeting with budget committee and change this if we think that that is the prudent way to go. Or we need to say it's already baked in and we'll just have to keep interviewing until we find somebody that accepts a little less than forty thousand dollars a year to be our treasurer and tax collector.
Well, there is, there is a, there's another option. The, uh, I asked MMA, uh, I sent him a picture of this because there was always the question of, can you, can you move stuff around within the box? Okay, and they said yes, uh, given the way this is. And so, uh, you, you know, uh, I guess if you ended up overspending on town managers, or I'm sorry, overspending on tax collector treasurer salary, uh, you, you, we're gonna have to find it somewhere else within the budget. And if we exceed four oh three, oh oh three.
Different box.
Before we do that, we would have to go to the town and ask them to give us some more money. When, when does that happen?
Bottom line, it's a percentage over the bottom line.
Oh, this is so.
I don't believe in this category there, but that's just my.
You can't change the bottom line. You move everything around within it.
Yes, sir. And, and you can't change it in roads. You got fifteen percent. There's some, there's some categories you can change. There's roads and general, general assistance, I believe.
But it's just the bottom line. You, you, you can't, on this one, you can't change.
Yeah, and we gotta stay within four oh three, oh oh three, or ask the town for more money. At such time, it looks like we're gonna exceed it.
Yeah.
And so that's always a possibility. Just make it, make it work somehow with what we have.
All right, so discussion.
There is some more in there. I mean, you've got, I know you put a lot more in legal and there is a chance there's more money that can come and go. We've had ability to put more money in the legal in the past. We had to.
Yeah. Yes, and one of the reasons I believe that we increased legal was because we knew we have these issues with the, with the, uh, with the woods, with the hundred acre woods, that's going to entail paying lawyers some money. Or, or paying other legal expenses that are related to it and not just necessarily the lawyer's fees. There could be other legal expenses.
It sound like you're looking for about ten thousand dollars or something, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah.
A little over ten eleven.
Technically, for the year, you could get by. There's some fluff in there. You could get by. Be tight.
What do you, what do, what do you think the combined position hours requires?
The number of hours?
For a week?
What would you say, Shannon? Thirty two, then maybe, uh, three a month for meetings or?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thirty two.
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty two plus, you know, so, so maybe if you said, if you said thirty three a week, that would be four hours extra for meetings each month. So say thirty three a week.
Well, the other thing too is that the difference that I'm coming up with is, uh, ten eight, but as soon as you start paying somebody more, to your point, we're gonna end up paying more in FICA.
Yeah.
Um, too. So there's, you know, maybe twelve that we're gonna need anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Board wanna vote on this? Or do we want to, um, what do we wanna do? Motion on the table.
How would we feel, how would we feel? Like, there's a motion on the table. How would we feel, uh, if the, if the vote, if the vote was no? How would we feel about having a special meeting to to work it out and dumps, dumping over to the public comment section, how would the, how would you guys feel about a special meeting?
Can I just suggest that it may be worth tabling this one for a moment? If it turns out you have several other articles where you wanna make changes?
Yes.
You might be in a better position to determine what you need supplemental meeting about.
I would, I, I, I would move that we, uh, that we, uh, come back to this later in the, uh, later in.
Can you just withdraw your motion?
I could withdraw, did I, I think I made it, so I would drop my motion to, uh, consider approving or disapproving article eight. But it's how it works.
All right.
Oh, you did. I think the second has to, also seconded.
Somebody asked you that, okay.
I'll second it. All, all in favor? Is that what you're asking? Just?
I'm just, procedurally, I'm just.
She's withdrawing.
It's a way for you to just withdraw your motion, but I didn't know when the second had to be as well.
Oh, excuse me, pardon me, yeah. Did you second that originally?
He did.
Okay.
Draw my second too.
There you go. Thanks.
We'll come back to it.
Got it.
Well, move, we consider approving article nine, uh, for elections and hearings in the town warrant.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, uh, again, I'm not gonna vote no on this one, cuz, but, but I believe that we're going to have to have an extra election during the year that we haven't budgeted for. If indeed a town meeting issue comes up, that's gonna be settled by referendum vote, being the hundred acre woods. And, but, uh, uh, having said that, um, when we ever get around to voting, my vote's gonna be yes. But that is, there, we're gonna have, uh, we, we, we may have an issue there. And if there's a town meeting that is, if there's an election that is specifically only because of the legal problems that we have with the hundred acre woods, perhaps that can be covered as a legal expense. We can ask somebody about that and that's a possibility, so.
That's a good point. I would bet that would be the case.
Yeah, and so I, I'm just pointing out, we'll have to have another election, I think, but it doesn't, I, I, I'm gonna vote yes.
Okay. All in favor? All right, uh, article ten.
Uh, move, we vote to recommend or not article ten, health and human services for the town warrant.
Second.
Uh, discussion.
Your reason why general assistants went up so much? Is that based on actions?
That was, yes. Four thousand nine thirty nine, year to date.
One percent.
Were, were any of those, um, special and unusual circumstances, do you know?
I'm not sure what they were.
I'm not familiar. Do you have any knowledge as to whether that was the same situation of preceding year?
The, so in preceding years, I don't have anything about.
Yeah, so I don't mean to catch it there.
I think your spreadsheet might have it on there, doesn't it?
Yeah, so twenty twenty four, it was a total of nine hundred and ninety five dollars spent. And then in this year, it was four thousand nine hundred.
So it was based on actual?
It was based on the actual data.
Okay, I was just curious.
No, at least what we have in records.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? I'm abstaining. Okay, uh, art, article eleven.
It's a, it's one of that one, okay.
Um, article eleven, uh, move to recommend or not article eleven, uh, miscellaneous fire equipment and capital reserve fund for the town meeting warrant.
Second, you do a second?
I didn't.
I think, no, you're the second, uh, discussion.
No.
All in favor? Unless, unless they're, did I give everybody enough time?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, article twelve.
Move, we consider article twelve, um, for assessing for select board recommendation for the town meeting warrant.
Second.
Uh, discussion. All in favor? Uh, thirteen.
Move, we consider article thirteen animal control, uh, for recommendation for the, um, town meeting warrant.
Second.
Discussion.
Shannon, based on your, uh, efforts so far to fill that job, are we okay with the amount of the stipend, do you think?
Uh, for right now, yes.
Good question. All in favor? Okay, uh, article fourteen.
Move, we consider article fourteen, court enforcement land use board support, uh, for recommendation for the town meeting warrant.
Second.
Uh, discussion. All in favor? Article fifteen.
Will we consider article fifteen, public safety for recommendation for the town meeting warrant?
Second.
Discussion.
I'd point out that our Sheriff's Department is at the bottom of the, bottom of the. Those comparable towns for wages, and there's a possibility that it'll go up, but there's no way to know when and how. Just a footnote.
I'm sure we've discussed this, and I don't recall, the winter dispatch?
Uh, yes, so the both the dispatch and the ambulance service you'll see has gone up because they are covering down on the costs of their unrecoverables. Um, and so previous years, winter has just covered uh, for all of the seven towns that they have. And so this year, they are looking to redistribute that out for the, based off of a percentage as well as. Uh, I think it's a fifty fifty percent, fifty percent um. Use and fifty percent population for.
Thanks.
Alright, all in favor? Okay. Uh, Article sixteen.
Will we consider Article sixteen, Road Reconstruction, Paving Capital Reserve Fund? For recommendation for the town meeting warrant?
Second.
Discussion. Has there ever been, has there been a balance to bring forward? And if so.
I'm guessing there will be, but I don't know that for sure.
The auditors, I tried calling them again today, and they still have not presented me with the year and uh, financials for twenty twenty four.
But I think what he's asking is, how is our year-to-date spending on this uh, roads?
I'm just kind of, I'm curious.
Yeah, where, where are we at? Where are we at year-to-date? Uh, on. On, on the uh, on the uh, on roads.
So, we still have a balance of one hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred twenty six, but we still have summer work that needs to be done.
That's, that's the capital reserve, right?
No, that's, that's this line for expenses uh, for roads, section one oh nine.
In, in the way this is written, whatever's left over gets added to the capital reserve.
Does.
Yes. See, this really isn't the capital reserve. It just says on the bottom, if there's anything left, it gets added to the capital reserve as opposed to falling into. Unallocated reserves.
Yeah, exactly, right. That's my question. I'm trying to just anticipate what. That number might be based on this budget.
So so far, we've spent two hundred and seventy eight thousand one hundred and ninety four dollars in roads this year. We have a balance of one hundred and nineteen.
Okay, oh yeah, alright, thank you.
Both of our expenses probably have gone already, don't you reckon? I don't know how this works exactly, but there's no more piling expenses. There's no more winter maintenance expenses. And so all we're looking at is, what do we have for the last half of May and June? So you probably have, will have a good chunk of that left, wouldn't you think? Of a hundred thousand?
Yes, I'd like to see some um, road grading get done.
Okay.
On a couple of roads, and then some other culprit work and some prep work as we get ready for. Roadwork.
Does that, will that be this fiscal year?
Uh, so, the, what I'm looking at for the one nineteen thousand would get carried over into the roads account anyway.
It, it goes to the, it goes to the reserve.
So that, i- in, if this were to pass as written, that one nineteen that's not spent would go to the.
Road reconstruction and paving capital.
Capital reserve.
Yes.
It would not be available for what the intent is to use it this summer, is that correct? Is that how I'm understanding?
It, it, it's not available after, after July. I don't think.
Yeah, Dave.
What Shannon's talking about is money from last year's budget, and last year's budget, there was no part of it that would take whatever remaining balance to be carried. Into a capital reserve account. We add that to be done this year.
Right.
To begin.
Right.
So if there was any money for roads, it would go into their capital account where it could generate money to do road projects.
Sure.
The difference that you're not understanding is, in the years past, we did, like, we stuck that dry doing road paving. Now we have road reconstruction and paving, and then this is the maintenance side. So she's got a hundred thousand maintenance, but she's still got her full grading contract, addition contract. There's a lot of work to do a month. So you can, that, that money, a lot of that will be spent.
So the reason why, the reason why I.
But this year, you won't have anything going in the capital. This, from right now, this year, it'll go to surplus if she doesn't spend it. Next year, in this budget, next year, if that hundred thousand was left over next year, it would transfer into the capital.
Okay.
But it will not this year, at this particular twenty twenty.
So the, I guess really the crux of the question I'm asking is, are we? Why are we raising an extra hundred thousand? What, like, why, why is, like? Is this, is this box reflective? Is this, is this Article sixteen reflective of the actual cost of maintenance? If, if, if we have a hundred thousand dollars left over. Are we A, not doing the projects, B?
Right, A, we're not doing the projects, right? That's basically the fact, but we still have a month and a half to do those projects. Including brush cutting, and there's a lot of stuff that, that has to be done, it can be done out of this year's budget.
I gotta walk along.
We're saying next year, if it comes up next year, when, if we're at this point in time next year and we've caught up on a lot of things. Then at least that money isn't just gone away from the road sector.
Yeah.
It goes into the capital account for roads.
Yep, no, I, I, I understand.
Does anybody know? And I don't know the answer to this. If, if she gets a contract awarded before July first. That says, this is the amount of money to pay for this, does that obligate this year's funds? Or is it the year's funds that the bills come in?
That's a good question, I mean.
I don't know how the federal government works. If you obligated, if you obligated it by the end of the fiscal year, it sets fiscal year's funds.
I believe it's flexibility.
Okay, I, I.
But I don't know that. That's something Shannon would have to check on. We don't have a whole lot left this year anyway, and we have some projects that are coming on the roadside later, so.
Okay.
That is a new, that's a new. Uh, direction for us.
No, I, 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 no, I, I, I understand. I, I, conceptually, I like it. I just want to make sure I understand, to make sure that money. Is A, budgeted appropriately, and B, whatever surplus.
It's what the fire department's been doing. It just carries into the roadside now.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, uh, Article seventeen.
Consider Article seventeen, Transfer Station Funds for Recommendation for the Town Warrant, Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Uh, discussion.
Why did it go down?
That's the numbers that the town of Redfield gave to me.
Awesome. So our, our, our um. Amount of um, appropriation dropped based on the other towns' valuations going up more than ours did. Which is why I asked you for that. So. It went down like, a little over two percent in allocation.
Okay. Uh, all in favor? Alright, uh, Article eighteen.
Consider Article eighteen outside agencies. For recommendations for.
You don't vote on that one?
Yeah. No, that's good. We usually hang back. So we'll, uh.
It's the office.
I think it's the office.
We don't necessarily have to make a recommendation vote. On this. We, we normally don't historically.
Why did the uh, winter? No, is this the, the winter vacation? Is this the one that Winter, Hobbit Kitchen is in? No, sorry. I was looking ahead.
There is a consensus though, however, we did make a consensus, consensus vote on Articles. One through seven, even though they weren't recommended. So, yeah, it's, it's a minor detail. Are we, do we, are we approved putting Article eighteen on the warrant? I guess that would really be the vote without a recommendation. So that's the motion.
Would you like me to restate?
I.
I, I don't think we need to. Everyone knows what they're voting on.
Alright.
Okay.
It's, alright. Alright, Article nineteen.
Article nineteen, bless you. Recreations and Organizations for Recommendation for the Town Meeting Warrant.
So, I highlighted a couple of things um, that we had talked about, and some of these, which was the Conservation Commission. And the um, Wayne Athletic Week Programs was an increase or a, a new line item for two hundred fifty dollars and five hundred dollars. Uh, and one thing that I had just left out, and I apologize, Amy, uh, was the events calendar. So it was pointed out to me in previous requests. Uh, the messenger had requested the forty two hundred, and the events calendar had requested four hundred and twenty. Uh, I didn't realize those were two separate things, and I didn't realize the, the events calendar was even a thing. So that was a request of four hundred and twenty dollars, and so that got added in there. So bringing the total to eighty one thousand three hundred and eight.
What is the history of, for previous years for the Thirty Mile River? Uh, do you have it there? I wonder whether that's gonna be adequate for the future.
Thirty Mile River, in twenty twenty two, it was sixty five hundred, twenty twenty three was seventy five hundred. Twenty twenty four, eight thousand, and twenty twenty five is ten thousand. Same this year.
And they've requested this amount, or?
They did.
Okay.
So we have a motion, right?
Uh, yes.
Was there a motion?
Consider Article nineteen, Recreation and Organizations for um. Recommendation for the Wayne Town Warrant.
Second.
Alright, further discussion.
Yeah, and is it just a coincidence? On the rec center mowing and the town parks mowing? That one went from six thousand to three thousand, neither one from three thousand to six thousand?
Oh, I'll have to check on, check on that, because I do know that we do break down the mowing.
Yeah, and I know the mowing went down, but it would make more sense that it. They both went down a bit, then one went down and the other one up.
Uh, I think that was just based off of how it was bid on. Oh.
Could just go down to this and just go down to that? Because otherwise, this.
I'd have to go back and actually pull the mowing contract, but that's, we had a different bid this year, and so I think it was bid on differently.
I thought it went down, but, yeah, so how do we, how do we handle that? If there's a typo in there, but we've got the right amount, is it okay for her to fix that?
I think it works because of the movement around within the box.
That's what I was gonna say. We're, we're basically voting on the bottom number, right?
We're, we're voting on eighty one thousand three oh eight in this, in this box, just, this information as to how the number, how we came up with it.
Mowing, last mowing. And then down here, we have mowing and historical mowing, and then there's certain coding that goes with each of them.
We'd have to check the contract, but I'm speculating that this number got transposed.
I'll check, look.
I, I believe this is how it was bid. It's a different better, and they bid completely differently than the stores.
Okay. You wanna vote on this? So do you, we can, do you want to, what can we do? We can um.
I think we're, okay, that's, that was my question, as long as. We can approve it as long, and she can, if those numbers are just transposed.
I mean, the question is, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate eighty one thousand three hundred and eight dollars? So I think we're okay if the line items. That's my opinion.
All in favor? Alright. Uh, Article twenty.
Consider Article twenty um, for Recommendation for twenty thousand one hundred and ninety eight dollars for landed buildings. For the Town Meeting Warrant.
Uh, you want a second? Second.
Thanks.
Uh, discussion. All in favor? Uh, Article twenty one.
Consider, uh, uh, motion to consider Article twenty one um, in the amount of three thousand dollars for the contingency account. For the Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Discussion.
This may be the right place to discuss it. Uh. Uh, Henry shared with us some stuff uh. About all the uh. Annual, the, the, the periodic. Contingency or. Stone. She, Duff Fund should be a good deal more than three thirty, three thousand dollars, should be at least a month's expenses, right?
Well, they, the, the uncommitted reserves, the MMA has um. Uh, guidelines on that, and I, I don't know what our number actually is. We have, we have to figure that out.
This is different?
This is, I think, is a different thing.
Okay.
But still, uh, I mean, I don't know if, you know, they, they should be whatever we think might be necessary to. To handle unforeseen situations that arise without calling a town meeting. I don't have any problem with three, but that's, that's what it's for, so maybe it should be more.
I was gonna ask what we spent last year, but.
Oh, yeah, I think it's just been kept the same every year.
I don't, I think we've spent any.
Yeah, I don't remember authorizing anything to go from contingency.
I, I, yeah, I kinda.
So that adds to the, to the contingency fund?
Fifty six sixty. Twenty twenty four was thirty three fifty.
It's always been over three, in the last three years.
But I didn't, I don't have an actual for twenty twenty five.
Okay. Uh, there was a second, right? All in favor? Alright, uh, Article twenty two.
Motion to consider Article twenty two. For five hundred and forty six thousand eight hundred for capital reserve for the town meeting warrant.
Second.
Uh, discussion.
No, I'm pretty sure what I've, and I didn't ask him, but I'm quite sure that what I've been saying about you can move within the box. Doesn't apply to this box, because there should have been, there should have been uh, towns uh. Meeting actions establishing each of these reserve accounts that we're supplementing here, saying that they can only be used for that purpose. So I don't have any problem with anything. I'm just noting that, I don't think we, we've been saying you can move around within boxes. That's not the case here. I don't, I don't think.
I understand that to be true. Yeah, we're just looking at um. That, so the tech plan is new. Is that right? That's, or is that a new?
I think that's been in there.
That has been in there?
That came up in twenty four.
In there for a while.
Do we have a reserve account for that, that has a balance?
Uh, uh, yes. Technology.
I think that was when Trio had an update, we were putting money away to. Update software.
So the reason I, I, I've asked about the tech plan, because we have the reserve account, but then we're also raising. Thanks, that's what I'm asking, that. How both accounts work together, so you're raising the money in general admin for Trio, which is a pretty significant number, and we're doing a. General res- uh, capital reserve, so I'm just trying to figure out kind of where we're at.
So there's currently uh, eight thousand for that account. There was four thousand carried forward from last year, and four thousand um, or from the year prior. And so eight thousand balance right there, but unless there was a, a vote to appropriate that for something uh, in the previous years. I don't have anything for it.
So. Have twelve next year.
That's what Bryce was talking about regarding um, potentially getting new computers for the office, is it not?
And we do need two new computers, yes, that is something. And I think the quote was uh, that I've, I just saw earlier today, I think was around four thousand.
I think, do you recall, we were talking about that?
I do remember. So is the, is the Trio line specifically for that software, not necessarily a tech plan?
Uh, unless they were, there was some plan to um, there's a web-based version of Trio that. Trio has put out to other municipalities that they want them to upgrade to. there's a web-based version of Trio that Trio has put out to other municipalities that they want them to upgrade to. Uh they're currently on a former version called SQL. Um but other municipalities have that have engaged in the the web version have encountered a lot of bugs that they're still working through. And so um so a lot of municipalities just haven't gone towards that yet. But Trio, the company, has pushed out saying that they want municipalities to do that, of course. So I think that might have been what the plan was for. I don't wanna work out those bugs.
So if I understand, I think what you summarized, this would bring that account to twelve thousand, is that correct?
Uh yes.
So that means you could either decide to replace equipment or you could start building some funds to upgrade the computer system to Trio or some other that's not a whole lot of money for an IT replacement.
Right.
Right.
Right. I'm just just thinking about what this plan, I mean, the 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 capital reserve plans are and I think you pointed that out the last couple meetings that you you what do you call the capital improvement plans, which would help identify sort of what direction we're like. You know, what's what's the end result? You know, where are we headed? How long is it gonna take?
How we, what's our timing, yeah.
You know.
So if you wanna do it over five years and you wanna get to ten thousand, you put two thousand each year, starting now this year.
So like, one one of my suggestions would be moving forward, which I eh eh before we vote to authorize these funds for the capital reserve plan, I think the capital improvement plan should work in tandem with it. So we know what we're raising and what what for and when. I mean, I think we talk about it and we have a sense of it, but it'd be nice to have more concrete estimates. That's moving forward. But um all in favor? Okay.
Uh move to consider article twenty-three, which is see if the town will vote to establish the RRC L RRC courts account as a non-lapsing reserve account for the purpose of improvement and maintenance to the LRC courts and provide the select board with continuing authority to spend from that account for that purpose without further vote of the town meeting. This authority to remain in force from year to year until rescinded by the town meeting. Uh is it necessary for me to read the whole thing each time?
That's hopeful.
Okay. Uh for recommendation for the town meeting warrant. Second.
Well, here we are. That's what I just said a minute prior, you know, kind of what is you know, what is the estimate cost? What is the sort of lifespan? But I know I I may have missed a meeting. I think Carol may have presented or somebody representing the court committee presented. And maybe that that information was delivered to the board. Is that?
It was delivered to them. Carol came and said um that she thought it would be a twenty-five thousand dollar resurfacing, I think she was talking about some sort of maintenance periodically would be twenty-five thousand, perhaps once every five years. The 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 way this is written, uh it it can be used for other things. Another thing that Carol mentioned is uh if people wanna contribute to the tennis or to the courts, people wanna contribute to the courts, then how do they know that the money they contribute is going to be used for that purpose and not spent on something else? Okay? The the law, and and this would facilitate that also because the statute says that the select board can accept cash contributions offered to supplement an existing appropriation. Uh and so if uh somebody donated a thousand dollars, then we should have a motion that says we move to accept a gift of a thousand dollars tendered to supplement the LRC uh courts reserve account, and it would go in there, and then it could only be used for that purpose. So that's and and the wording of this came from MMA on on article twenty-three.
So this establishes the account, but doesn't put any money in it?
That's been down in article twenty-five puts five thousand dollars.
Oh, there it is. Okay, good.
So why is the budget committee recommendation just?
And maybe we don't need it. There was some, there was some question on, oh, oh, you are you asking, should there be one? Should there be a budget committee recommend?
Just now.
Money, it's a non-money article.
Right.
Okay, but.
We make the recommendation later on.
Okay, but establishing a reserve account is not anything that the budget committee.
You guys, it's up to you to establish the account.
Well, the whole budget is up to us also, but.
Anyhow, moving on, the and the thing is, it it got missed. If you look at like technology and those things just got plopped in where now we're doing it in a way where you have a record. In twenty twenty-five, it does say it may be rescinded. There's no timeline on it.
I gotta go down there.
Right, when they wanna back it out of it. Later refunded it with what was required.
Every, 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 I suggest that every capital reserve, every reserve account we have should somewhere in our history have an article similar to this setting it up.
I think that's the point, yeah.
We we did some in the past, but then it was a period of time where it just got plugged in.
Okay, well, we and there's something to 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 talk to our to our lawyers about, but we probably would wanna go back and do maybe a ratification articles on each of these reserve accounts unless we can find the one that set them up. Don't have to do that now, but.
I I agree. I think that's just part of the the capital improvement plan and it authorizes the
For the purpose of the warrant, though, we don't need a budget committee recommendation, this one or the next one.
Right, because it's not a budget item until it's a line item.
So okay, so we see nothing wrong with this then?
I guess we don't.
Yeah, we do, because we need to establish, we need to establish this line item and the fund.
So we're just, we're just uh we're just surprising and forming the town that that our recommendation is whatever we vote.
They decide not to. I'm not sure what happens to article twenty-five.
All right. Yeah, yeah, if they don't establish the, if they don't establish the uh the uh reserve account.
We just take that five thousand out.
Or we could put the five thousand in article. I had it in two places and uh somebody recommended, yeah. Uh that it just go down below instead of up above. But you're right, if they if they deny article twenty-three and approve, see, and so maybe we need to change this, take out article twenty-five and put the two five thousands within the text of twenty-three and twenty-four.
Eric did recommend that.
Well, you could do it either way. I think in the past when we have had I'll call contingent articles like this.
Yes.
The moderator at the meeting has just made it clear that if you do not pass articles twenty-three and twenty-four, twenty-five becomes moot.
But.
Yeah, but in the
If if we, if we do that, then the big, the big problem is they pass twenty-three, they reject twenty-four. Then what do you do with twenty-five?
They can just, they can just correct the balance number.
Correct. Article twenty-five is answering both twenty-three and twenty-four, but twenty-three and twenty-four are separate articles.
Yes, and and originally I had the, I had the appropriated and raised five thousand dollars in the text of twenty-three. And we could do that back in the text of twenty-three and the text of twenty-four and then just get rid of twenty-five for this year. And then next year, they would go, those items would show up under capital reserves. So let's do that.
It's the same, same.
Because then you don't have the problem of of what if one gets approved and the other one doesn't.
Correct.
So article three would read to see the town, if the town will vote to establish on and on and on and on.
In the amount of five thousand.
In the amount of five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
In F twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, there there's some language that they gave that I had in there. Uh and I think I think the mess up was just also including article twenty-five. The language that MMA gave was to
Right.
Uh authorize and raise. I mean, we've got, we've got some words to put in there that that does that. I don't remember what they are right now.
And and just to be clear, if you do take that approach, then I think you can put back in the budget committee recommendation.
We are in both places.
Okay, so would that be a reason to have a meeting this week? Would that be a meeting to have a meeting later, another meeting later this?
They approved those two files.
So that's true. So what can we?
Can we do this to apply to uh establish and raise and appropriate the amount for twenty-three and the same for twenty-four?
Wording right here.
We got it somewhere.
I'm looking to see if I have that.
I think that would be less confusing.
I think so.
When it comes to a vote.
We approve subject to.
The five thousand dollars in each one.
Yeah, but but we need to find out how is the, they're asking if we can find out how they said that, so we can put it in there.
Yeah, I think we should have the correct wording to approve it.
Don't trust them to put in the very wording.
Uh to see if the town will vote to establish the LRC courts account as a non-lapsing reserve account for the purpose of improvements and maintenance to the LRC courts to raise and appropriate five thousand dollars to said non-lapsing account.
Okay, hang hang on to raise and appropriate.
Five thousand dollars to said non-lapsing account. My only concern with having it all together like this was our moderator said that this is considered a compounding question. And it asks the voters to vote on three different things. Uh one, will the town vote to establish the courts as a reserve account to raise and appropriate five thousand dollars? And three, provide the select board uh the continuing authority. That's the only thing with having all three of those into one.
Well, that's again, that's what that's what MMA gave us. And the problem, the problem was I stuck this article twenty-five in there and shouldn't have.
What can we make?
Article twenty-five was in there.
Okay, well, then maybe I didn't take it out, but the the I I don't see I don't see the problem that Doug has raised.
Well, what is?
Because if all those things are not done, the only, the only issue is the five thousand dollars. Somebody wanna make it four thousand or three thousand, but as far as the the establishing the account and uh the authority for the select board continuing authority to spend, that's part of stating what the account is. When you establish a reserve account, you have to say what is for and who has the authority to to take from it.
It's the numerical addition that makes it a little dicey.
So if 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 the establishing of the reserve account seems to be a record to move forward with these reserve accounts, which we talked about at the beginning of the conversation, couldn't couldn't could we just separate the uh uh LRC core project maintenance as article twenty-four? Which follows our article twenty-three and then article.
Yes, we could, we could, we could basically split twenty-five into two separate articles.
And then then we're still establishing the record of the account. Establishing the appropriation amount.
Okay.
Is that, I mean, we're gonna start recounting from there.
No, that's not working.
Does that, does that take away the compounding article to a degree?
Right.
So you have two parts and instead of three.
Doing the establishment in article twenty-three and twenty-four and then breaking article twenty-five into two separate line items.
They could have a twenty-five and twenty-six.
Right, article twenty, I think he's suggesting that twenty-four is the financial for that.
Yeah.
For twenty-three.
So you
And then twenty-five is, I'm sorry.
No, I'm immediately following article twenty-three, you could have the appropriation.
Right.
And then immediately following the sand and salt could have the appropriation. So that.
So that makes twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Four, five, twenty-six, yes, or on, is that the right count?
Yes. This becomes twenty-seven.
Article twenty.
We'll run this before somebody brings up another problem.
Is that?
My recollection is coming back to me now, but in the past when we've had these sort of contingent articles, I think we have included language in the article, parenthetical phrase. You know, to be voted only if the preceding article passes. Just to make it clear to people that you know, if if article twenty-three doesn't pass, then article twenty-four will play.
Right. That's right.
Nobody's gonna worry about reserving money for the the courts and the assault and sanctions.
But yeah, I think you're right, or I know you're yes.
So article twenty-three to establish the LRC court account. Article twenty-four would be including that appropriation contingent upon the passing of the previous article.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then article twenty-five and twenty-six would be relatively similar for a salmon salchow. Okay, and then that picture, the table goes away.
So I'm gonna go forward by please correct me, cuz I'm sure I'll read it. You read twenty-three. Do do we need, we still need to vote on whether we ought to recommend that?
Well, are we, are we making recommendations for uh the authorization? Maybe we didn't for, I I'll do whatever I don't. The budget committee opted out to recommend cuz it wasn't an appropriation, so the next one would be the appropriation.
It'd be our job to recommend it.
But under article twenty-four, it would be including the appropriation and article twenty-six would be the appropriation. And so then it would be recommended by this uh budget committee, which has already voted on both of those and recommended by the select board if you so choose.
I think he's asking, do we want a select board recommend on article twenty-three? Who thinks there should be one?
Yes.
Okay, so it's.
Yes, I think we still need to be recommending that we that we um establish that line item.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. We can just move the motion and vote.
All right, um all in favor? Okay.
Yeah, okay, so then I wanna make a motion that we approve an article twenty-four that reads, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate five thousand dollars for LRC courts account?
Capital reserve account.
Well, it's not just capital reserve. It's improvements and uh maintenance. Let's see, what do we have?
LRC court maintenance, project maintenance is what it's called under the capital reserve, right?
But Henry, you need to move it into a capital reserve account.
So I think it should be uh moved to appro- in article twenty-four, moved to appropriate five thousand dollars to the LRC court project maintenance account under capital reserve or recommended recommendation for the town warrant.
To be voted only of the preceding article.
Only if the preceding article passes.
So before we agree to that, we've called it the LRC counts ports account. It didn't have the word project in there, so I think we should at least be consistent with the name.
LRC court maintenance.
Right. Up above, right.
Title should be the same, whatever we decided is.
The line item is, right. Do you follow that, Chef?
I do.
Okay.
Can you repeat what you wanna do, that change?
We should we should be consistent in what we call this account.
Yes.
So in article twenty-three, if we establish the LRC courts account when we appropriate money in article twenty-four, we wanna use the exact same name that we use in article twenty-three.
And I would say, let's change article twenty-three to say LRC court project maintenance. Because I think it's more specific.
I would take up project.
Okay.
Cuz the project's done now.
Well, it define, it defines the purpose, establishes the LRC courts account.
Right.
Then it's got the wording around about improvements and maintenance, so I think it's covered. I think we just need to call it same.
Got it. You're right.
Same thing.
It does say that up there. I see what you're.
So you wanna call it the LRC courts.
Courts account.
Because that's what we called it in twenty-three.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be really Yeah. Accounts is redundant. It's capital reserve. We already know it's an account, so can it just be LRC ports like? Road reconstruction and paving, technology, I don't care.
Manus is not, I don't think that, you know. Special reserve accounts. Under, I think we just heard today from somebody that special reserve accounts. Under a town's home rule authority may be uh established for things other than capital expenditures. If you if you put in the article establishing the account, what the purpose of the account is.
Which you just did.
Yeah. So it's not a capital reserve.
It says non-lapsing reserve account. What do you call them all, non-lapsing reserve accounts?
No, 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 it's it's fine. All I'm saying is it's not necessarily for to purchase a capital assets. Okay, the the most of these others are, road reconstruction would be capital asset. A fire truck is a capital asset. Uh but you can't have a reserve account that doesn't ne- necessarily is limited to capital asset.
Like technology?
Technology would be a capital asset. Like you buy computers now.
Trending quite earlier is that the others didn't have any any justification on them. You just made a justification on this account. The name of the account is L R C courts. The justification says right there, for the purpose of improvements and maintenance.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Oh, hide together.
All right, so. What do we call him this count? Hazel, you get the final. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Shannon got the wording.
I can't, I can't remember where we're we're at.
Did you get the trying good wording for uh article twenty, the new article twenty-four? Regarding the five thousand dollars.
I think so, okay.
So that's what um to raise and appropriate five thousand to said non-lapsing account was included in this. From MMA, but that's when I was, after talking with the moderator, that's what they said, it was a compounding account, and so we'll make it more challenging for voters to vote on.
So do we need to restate um a new um motion for article twenty? The new article twenty-four regarding approci- appropriation raising and appropriating five thousand dollars?
I thought we had it. I thought collectively.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, I just wondered if Shannon got it all down.
Oh, uh yes, I do have that.
Okay.
Okay.
So we we ready to vote? All right, all in favor.
I just want to know what we're voting on.
Will vote to raise and appropriate five thousand to the L R C courts. Account.
To be voted only of the preceding article passes.
And that's a parenthetical, I think, that they were saying that goes down below. All right.
Time to move on?
All in favor?
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, let's do it again.
Article twenty-four or twenty-five. Newly renumbered, to see if the town will vote to establish the sand. Salt shed account as a non-lapsing reserve account for the purpose of replacement. And to provide the select board with a continuing authority to spend from that account for the purpose without uh further vote of town meeting. This authority to remain in force from year to year until rescinded by town meeting for our recommendation uh for the town warrant.
Second, uh discussion. I don't know if I wanted to start a discussion.
No.
Eric's going to.
Yes, Eric.
I can't remember to tell you this before, but you probably should say replacement of the existing sand salt shed, not just return and replacement.
Okay.
Of existing.
The existing, okay.
Okay.
Was the budget committee presented with any information about this project?
Pretty on that. But it the maintenance should be in there as well, because it's not just for replacement, maintenance and replacement.
Well, how's the salt set getting taken care of now?
With a capital, we raised money, we bought it, and then we didn't put any more money into it whatsoever.
But we don't do anything.
But it needs maintenance, so it's not just replacement, maintenance and replacement. Of the existing.
Should I restate the motion or?
Is this capital reserve account is the intent for this for for replace, oh, I mean, it's it's, well, what does it say? Purpose of replacement of the existing?
And maintenance.
And so that was brought up by one of the Reds Committee members and regarding. By our manager plow as well, driver. Um regarding the replacement of it, I went down there, I took a look in the back of the like Quonset hut. Uh is kind of going off the foundation, there's certain conduits that's broken, um things like that, and I mean, the building, it's starting to. Kind of not rust, was it, when it breaks down with all the salt oxidation oxidizing um along the edges. And so there's no door, the lights don't really work, there's no deterrence for anything.
Do we plan, does the town plan on spending any money? To repair this 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 palatial item? Uh or are we just going to replace?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it should be maintenance and replacement. You're starting this fund to do maintenance, to repair and maintenance, and then if you have to replace it.
To keep it standing for a little while.
Yeah, okay.
Should I restate or are we good?
Right.
For the purpose of replacement and maintenance.
Of existing.
Of the existing sand and salt shed.
Okay.
That's good.
All right. All in favor? Okay, uh article, this will be article twenty-seven.
Did you have a second?
It would be article twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yes.
Twenty-six would be.
Oh, sorry, I skipped the appropriation line, sorry.
Articles, yeah, would be to appropriate, and I don't have the wording well for this, to appropriate um and raise. Five thousand dollars for the sand and salt shed account. As it's in parentheses, as long as article twenty-five passes.
Okay.
Second.
Uh discussion.
That was really said poorly.
All in favor? Okay.
And you put by the committee recommendations on those last two appropriations ones too.
Yeah, appropriations get a vote.
So now we're at article twenty-seven, correct?
Correct.
That that's the, that's our, that's our revenues. Uh I I'm sure bought a helmet or something, because you've been fixing to throw stuff at me, I'm pretty sure.
Should we move? Are you gonna make a motion?
No, I'm going to, um, I think we need to have.
More revenue?
No, I think we need to have an article on the lab recreation center. The, you know, we said, we, everybody says that we need to have an article on the lab recreation center, and then we said, well, let's kick this can down the road. And and because of that, I've been losing sleep, and I'm an old man, I need all the sleep I can get. So I'm going to propose. Uh, an article. And uh if if I propose it and everybody says, no, we're still gonna kick the can down the road, then I will sleep like a baby, so I'll be perfectly happy. Uh, the 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 town owns. An account at the Winthrop Area Federal Credit Union that has fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-three cents in it. There's nothing that I know of that says what this account is for. I believe the account was established by funds that were contributed for lab center programs and lab center program revenues. That were transparent or nonexistent in the budget. Uh, and my understanding, and maybe we started with a specific uh gift for this, but. Uh from time to time, as the balance of other lab center funds uh. Reaches a certain point, the lab center has requested that X dollars be put into their savings account. And that resulted, I suppose, in the town writing a check from Anderson Stoggen Bank to Winthrop Federal Credit Union. And does that sound right? By people who know?
I I believe so.
Okay.
There have also been direct deposits from the charitable corporation.
Yeah, there, yeah, there was one like this month, a first thousand and some dollars that we were that that we were wondering about. Okay. Um, so. And and they're currently on the table is a request to so the town to put ten thousand dollars in the savings account. And the question comes up. By the town manager and also by me is. By what authority does the town write a check? From Anderson Stoggen Bank to the Winthrop Area Federal Credit Union to to put money in this account. So today, uh, we talked with uh Phil. And Dana and I to say. Phil, do you think we should try to fix some of this this year, or should we just let it go and try to fix it in a special meeting, which we're probably gonna have to have one next year anyway? Uh and his recommendation was fix whatever you can fix this year. Is that what you understood?
Yes.
Uh, and so. One thing that we could do, uh and this doesn't solve all the questions regarding town lad relations. This just addresses some budget issues. Uh, what we could do, and we would have to send this to our lawyers to see if it's okay, so this would require another meeting by both by both of our committee to. To approve it. I say, see if the town will vote to establish the lab recreation center programs reserve. As a non-lapsing account for the purposes of supporting lab recreation center programs. And or capital improvements to the lab recreation center in furtherance of such programs. To appropriate to said non-lapsing account, funds in the amount of fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-three cent of the fifty-four thousand, three forty-four. Balance contains in the town of Wayne deposit account number two, five, five, four, two, in the Winthrop Area Federal Credit Union. And designated as the lab recreation account. To provide that all interest accruing to and deposits made to such Winthrop Area Federal Union account. Number two, five, blah, blah, shall be added to said non-lapsing reserve account. And to provide the select board with continuing authority to spend from the account for those purposes. Without further vote of the town meeting, this authority to remain in force from year to year until rescinded by the town meeting. The purpose of that or the effect of that would be to establish. The a, with that money, a a special reserve account that I assume we would just leave there. And that account could be used for capital work, that account could also be used for operating expenses. And the reason that I like that is if we go to the town. In phase two of this. Effort and say. The town budget needs to uh provide for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in lab center expenses. That's going to be raised by charitable contributions and program revenues. Uh someone might say, well, what happens if the money doesn't come? And uh one answer to that would be, well, there's the special reserve account. That if the need arises, money can be transferred to pay these costs. And if a deficit is a habitual problem, then uh then we're just gonna have to revise our spending. So. The specific wording of this, we have to send to our lawyer and see if that would work. There's no need to for us to even call him if nobody wants to mess with it, if we want to kick the can down the road, or we don't want to have a special meeting.
So Henry, can I pause you for a minute, because you just talked for quite a few minutes?
I know.
And I wasn't sure whether you were talking to us as the select board.
Okay.
The budget committee or the lad rec.
I was.
Representatives that were there?
Yeah.
And I also wasn't sure why. If if the budget committee didn't have to weigh in on establishing the reserve accounts. Does the budget committee have to have a meeting to have that conversation, or is that a meeting that select board?
Yeah.
Would make that decision?
I was thinking the budget committee would have to weigh in uh on the reserve accounts, but apparently the budget committee is not required for anything. Is what I've been told today, for anything that doesn't. Include the uh commitment of taxpayer funds. Okay, and so if that's the case, then I guess that don't, this doesn't mean, so I'm talking.
So now that's a conversation over this way.
Talking to you, but I think we, okay, yeah, I'm talking to you, to us.
That sounds good. Um, I I still would like to know what um folks in the lad recreation center.
Yeah.
Think of that, but I certainly would like to at least put some of this to bed so that. I would this also allow us to legally accept contributions and put it into that account?
I think I think if you get a cash contribution to supplement an existing appropriation. Then then you can do it, and and I think we can do that right now, because we have a forty-three hundred dollar appropriation for L R C programs.
Okay, so we don't need to, we don't need to solve that.
We don't need this account to accept appropriations. I think we can, or to accept contributions. I think we can accept the contribution to supplement. The L R C programs appropriation right now, but that requires our action. We have to, we have to.
Granted, but what this would solve is fifty-four hundred dollars that ends up being used kind of by the town. But specifically by L R C, it would put a fact in a town budget and make it a little more transparent.
Well, we've got a fifty-four thousand dollar account that the town owns. That isn't reflected in any of the, in any of the reserves. So heck, I guess technically it's uncommitted reserve. I mean, I don't really know, we'd have to ask a legendary expert about that. I I don't know what it is.
Did that show up on the audit?
I uh, how did the auditors, how did the auditors treat? Yeah, we have, we have had that account for years.
I haven't been able to get in touch with them.
Can I weigh in a little bit? Yeah. What what we've been trying to make more transparency out of the whole thing. And as the budget committee is more, if you're asking for money to raise appropriate money. And this is probably a good time, and Henry kind of went on to phase two, which I'd rather not even get into. If we just focus on one thing, that we would create an account to take that money that's in a bank account. And put it in this capital account, or yeah, it is a capital account, it would be like the other capital accounts, so. You you don't want to confuse the voters, thinking they have to raise fifty-four thousand dollars. What we need to know is this is just transparency, moving that over.
Right.
Next year, when you look at the budget, there'll be a new line, it'll be zero for last year, and then it'll have that fifty-four thousand or whatever in it. And at that point, there can be articles to put money in or however you deem necessary.
Uh and would that affect the, that shouldn't affect the way that lad L R C does its business, right? Access to the money, what it spends it on, is that accurate?
I think what it will do, as Henry has suggested, is it will provide a little more governance structure.
Right.
To how money is deposited and withdrawn from that account, where today is quite nebulous.
Yes.
This would give more explicit authority to the select board to access those funds for the specific purpose.
I would love that.
And.
I just want to know if there's any downside to L R C that they want.
Right now, I don't know who's fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars, this fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars belongs to. I know whose money is that? Yeah, as far as I go, to me, it's like it's the town's money, it's in the town account. If we can move it into a special reserve account. Then that will become trust funds, and the only thing it can be spent for is the things that are in the article. And so then it will still be town money, but the town is restricted and can only spend that money for for L R C program purposes.
You you it may be the case, if you go back through history, to late back in seventies, early nineteen eighties, there may be some time.
Yeah.
To establish this account. I doubt it, but it's possible, but whether or not there was, I think the notion of creating a ratifying article for every one of these special reserve accounts. That's a good idea, just for transparency and record keeping.
Yeah, yeah. And then and then we need to, as a town manager task, we need to put all of them someplace. Where every year we will have them.
I suggest you write it like you did the salt shed article. The budget committee has nothing to do with it. It's strictly you guys write it, put it in there, and then next year we'll deal with it.
Right, right.
Okay.
Because it's just a matter of moving money that's already there and.
Already there.
Creating a line item. Within the budget that we see.
So we like from us the authorization to check that with our attorneys.
Which means we have to take another vote.
Which means that we have to take another vote or just put it off until next year, that we will have a special, uh, we're gonna have to have a special meeting about the Hundred Acre Woods. At some point in time, after, you know, at some point in time after July, that's gonna happen. And so, uh. And so, uh. You know, we could add other things at the same time.
So calendar wise. We have to approve the warrant by next Tuesday?
It has to be up on the wall next Tuesday.
So a select board meeting, if we if we went back to our first and third, if we. Go back to the scheduled meeting next Tuesday would actually be too late.
It would be too, yeah, that's why we did the changes, because it has to be actually posted during the, it has to be up on that day. It has to be up on that day.
Nine o'clock is that day?
Well, that maybe that work we could ask and then, you know. But that's a, that's a question to ask, and.
The idea of getting it done this year and not. Doing it later is nice if we, if there's a way.
Let's do it then.
But we need the wording.
We need the wording. Well, we can, we can, we can send this to, uh, we can send this to, uh. Bill, and I'm sure he'll tell us if that's if that's right or not, we don't, you know, these are pretty narrow questions, we got them. We still don't have answers to many, 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 many questions that we sent him. But but I texted him today and said, hey, we got a meeting coming up, can you just focus on these two questions? And he did, and.
So that motion you read mimicked Article twenty-three and also had a provision to move the money from the bank account?
Yeah, the only thing that's that's. Different and tricky that I'm not sure how to do is is those other articles. Talked about raising and appropriating, it was a new account that we were going to raise and appropriate tax dollars to to fund.
That was the secondary part though, it wasn't the first part, that was the secondary part, you don't need that.
But this, this is, is, this is basically taking an existing account. And designating it as. A reserve account, I mean, we got this existing account, that's whatever it is.
Can we write it and vote on it? And if we find out it's not legal, then then figure out how we're gonna fix it?
So would it be like to just?
Well, I mean, if 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 three of us say we can, then we can.
See, but so for example, like if you just go flip back to Article twenty, the sand and salt and LRC courts, I mean. See if the town vote to establish, um, the Lad Center. Reserve account?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
As a non-lapsing reserve account for the purpose of. That's kind of a dot, dot, dot.
Yeah, okay.
What's the purpose of?
Philip, do, like, are there recreation, I mean, facility, I mean, what, there was some language in there, I thought maybe you had.
Yes, yes, there is, but what I, uh, what I. What I'm really trying to do is is put a. Put a corral around this credit union account.
I see.
And the funds in the credit union account.
I understand, so we're really, we're, we're, we're.
The legal words about how we take it from one account and move it.
Yeah.
Right.
What's wrong with signing it to our lawyer tomorrow and, uh?
Yeah.
And seeing what he thinks.
If if we take that approach. We can't approve this warrant tonight.
I think we can approve every article that we voted on. Those are already approved, aren't they?
But then, but but you need to have this posted by a week from today.
Has to be up on the wall Tuesday, next week from today.
I'm not super enthusiastic about additional meetings, but that's just me.
Well, then we can just skip it. And do with what, take, you know, go with what we have. Skip this and. I'll feel better about it. Uh, and and take it up, take it up next year or or sometime, you know, after the first of the year.
What are other, what are the board members on there? I'm only one, if you guys want to have some extra meetings.
And and also, also, another thing to consider is. What needs to be done with this? Uh. May be impacted by the ultimate resolution of the total relationship between the town and the Lad Center.
That's fair, that's a good point.
Which is going to, which.
That's gonna require a meeting.
Which which should be, which should be taken care of, but we are waiting for answers to questions that. We, in conjunction with the with the folks at the Lad Center, have sent to, uh, Phil and company.
So Henry, if we punt, you'll sleep better?
I will, because I brought it up and it's, uh.
There was not a motion on this, right?
There was no motion on this, so so we can go on to the, we can go on to the, uh. To the rest of it.
I don't know, I mean, how do others feel?
We we still haven't settled the whole thing about the treasurer yet.
Yeah, we still have to go back a few pages.
Right.
I think that, wow, I already said.
So I guess, I guess what I would ask you is is see how fast you can get that answer.
Okay, that would be fine.
The wording.
That that means we can't approve this entire warrant tonight. That's my concern, because I want to make sure it's posted in O two. That's my concern.
Yeah.
It's it's a timing issue.
Right, but so are you, are you satisfied with where we're at with the treasurer and tax collector numbers?
Uh, well, we can go back to that.
Yeah, let's go back.
We'll go back to that, I want to make sure.
Do we finish? Do we need to finish the?
Yes, ma'am.
The rest of the articles and then go back?
Yeah.
Yes, we are going to, okay, I'm gonna go forward.
So we're not. We're not doing anything like this.
Yeah.
That's because you would ask about how fast we can get the answer back, but I don't think we can get, even if we can get the answer back tomorrow, we still have to convene. To put it on the warrant.
Yeah.
Right, bless you.
How about this?
But if we just.
I'd like, Trent, I'd like.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh. We, uh. Send a draft article to our lawyer for his input. Uh, and, uh, depending on that, if we need to have a special meeting, look at amending the warrant that we approved tonight to add that to it before it's posted. Uh, and that's my motion. And maybe, uh, maybe God will smile on us and nobody will give me a second. Is it?
Wait a second, uh, I need discussion on this. All right, all in favor?
Yeah. Are you against?
Yeah, I'm against, I want to get this warrant wrapped up. I like the intent of it, I'm just concerned that I think, I think the the reason why I'm against is because I think you answered your own question, there might be, there might be, uh, uh. A a redirection or a new establishment based on, based on. The relationship between the Lad Center and the town, so I think that this might be a little bit in advance of what the relationship description is, that's all. So I'm not gonna vote for.
Trent, my understanding of what we voted on was we're gonna approve the warrant. We're gonna be going, we're going to amend the warrant if we get enough information back. It looks like it's in the times, like we should. Still gonna, we're not gonna hold up the warrant, we're gonna move with the warrant as we can tonight. And then decide on whether.
Yep, that's what I suggest, yeah.
So if we don't feel like we.
I'm in the minority anyhow. Yeah, uh, Ken.
A little bit concerned about, I I believe that no matter what direction we pay. In the in the future about the relationship. That this motion will facilitate either way. And in the past, Henry has said, because he doesn't believe that we currently have the, the Select Board doesn't have the authority to approve warrants. The LRC that he would vote against warrants for expenditures by the Lad Recreation Center Board and. Everything it takes to run a program, that that he believes that it's it's not legal and he would vote against approving the money.
I promise to do it. Starting till our first.
I think that's an important thing to take care of, if it's at all possible.
Let's find out if it's possible.
So that, that's I understand, I I that's kind of, that's a, um. I lost, I.
Okay, here's what, here's what Ken is saying, when it came to the, I think it was at a, at a budget meeting. There, there is no budget item for. Uh, anything in this, anything in this AP warrant. That's coded to, is it a, is it a three hundred code? There's a code that goes for LRC activities. And everything in this warrant that's coded to one of those LRC, Lad Rec Center Internet, for example. A hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Show me where that is in the budget.
I see.
It's not. Now, so, uh, and 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 my statement was, I owe an apology to everybody for not having been voting against those all along, because they're not right. But we can't, we need to get it right, and if we don't get it right, I'll start voting against it.
So does this, the establishment of this count regardless of the future relationship?
It would help that.
Change that.
That would help that, yes.
All right, I'll vote, I'm gonna change my vote then, I'll vote in favor as long as we can move this warrant along.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I I understand.
Maybe we won't be able to do it, but.
You make a good point, and that follows up. I've, that's that's more information for me.
Okay.
We have to wait.
So.
The next one, remembering.
As long as that. Yeah, the contingency component of that.
Dave. Is there a way, Henry, to? Boy, what you said is right, is just condense it somehow. So it's just create this account, keep it as simple as you can when you go to write this article, or you're gonna confuse the heck out of your audience that you're talking to.
Well.
It's just a matter of moving money that you already have into this capital account period.
Well, well, also, one of the things that we can do, I believe. Is starting, and we got to figure out what to do with the balance that we have, and I'll call that the operating account. But one of the things we need to do is start accepting all these, uh, donations and revenues. As a supplement to the forty-three hundred dollars that's already appropriated. And then, uh. Charge as far as a budget item, I would be accounting system stays the same, but as far as a budget item, when I say is that in the budget? You point to the latest balance remaining on the LRC programs line item.
But can't you accept it into this new account too? You can have it directly in there.
This is one. But that account isn't for the purpose of paying things that show up on the warrant, that's the savings account, you need a checking account as well in order to pay the operating expenses. This is a reserve account, I question whether it's a capital reserve or just a straight reserve. It's a reserve account. It's not, this doesn't solve your problem.
But I think, I think my problem can be solved. By taking and supplementing the forty-three hundred dollar appropriation.
What should? Fifty-four hundred thousand dollars is the current balance. How much goes in every year, how much comes out every year? We're saying that this is a surplus literally or?
Historically, money has only come out to fund major capital improvement projects.
Uh, so so this.
Roof replacement.
Right, so this is has, this maintains itself then?
It does, it gets funding installments from the Lad Charitable Corporation every year. And as Henry said, at times of our operating funds are carrying a surplus, we will occasionally transfer some money into their reserve.
So we can't solve the Lad Rec relationship in the short term, and we're especially dependent, I'm waiting for them to answer.
Hmm, yes.
Your thirteen page number with.
Yes.
With associated questions in it.
Yes.
But we can take this step.
We could take this, he wanted to change that.
Yeah, I got some new information.
We could take this step because that at least acknowledges and designates that account. For the purpose of the Rexona.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is transparent, because somebody might come along and say, which is why I asked what the auditor said about it. Somebody could come along and say, what's this, uh, fifty thousand, fifty-four thousand dollar account?
Right.
Hanging out here.
Right.
Who has access to it? Actually, more risk to the Rexona that would get re-appropriated back into town funds, but.
I think it's awful for the Rexona. Sometimes have trouble convincing anybody of that, but I think it's. I I don't, I don't think it's good for them. The way we currently have, you know, the way we're currently set up.
Okay, so if we could. If we get the. Well, we let, what we voted on was we're gonna approve the warrant unless he gets more information back in time, in which case we'll meet and amend the warrant.
Right.
As well.
Yeah, good, all right, that sounds good, thanks.
Are you ready for Article twenty-seven?
Twenty-eight, no.
We've already voted on that, so I'm more than ready.
Is it twenty?
Yes.
It's twenty-six plus one, yeah. Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Revenues?
Yeah.
It's twenty-seven, I thought, okay, um. Motion to consider Article twenty-seven, shall the town accept, uh, okay? Let me start again, sorry, motion to, uh, consider Article twenty-seven. Um, regarding the twenty-twenty-five tax commitment of six thousand thirty-two, six, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. For, uh, the recommendation in the town meeting warrant, sorry.
That's.
Discussion, all in favor?
What's a second?
Oh.
Refuse revenue sharing is is dependent on any federal funds at all? Or is that all state money, state revenue sharing is two-thirds the way down?
I believe that's, uh, all state revenues.
Okay.
Awesome, all in favor? Okay, great. Thank you.
I think we've already done those, we've had, we've had, uh, we've had motions in the past on this treasure ordinance to put on there and on the, uh.
So I think, all right, that's good.
We're done for this.
All right, so, uh, we're gonna go back to number eight, Article eight. Uh, I think we tabled that motion.
You think did a bigger number here, uh, whether whichever way we put it, we'll hope you had in filling that position.
I'm not sure, to be honest, I honest, I honestly have not received many applications. Even without a salary listed, um. If the salary went up, maybe it would be more incentivizing, um, and if I were to advertise it.
What what's your due due date for the, for the current one you're doing now? What's the closing date?
Oh, I I didn't put a closing.
Okay, so it's until, till, till?
Yes.
How long you think would be reasonable to 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 hold it to, 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 so? Just however long it takes?
Yes.
Just need to get somebody here.
Advertising.
That is.
But then the advertising options that you will, they haven't taken, taken advantage of yet, or have you done?
Have I done all?
All the things you could think of that are cost effective for advertising.
I'll try to reach out and do some more, uh, I think that there is probably some more I can do, I've reached out to the schools, trying to get, uh, graduating seniors. Uh, guidance counselors, I've reached out to them. Um. So maybe with school finishing out, that would be good, uh, I've reached out to MMA, I've posted it on municipal page, I've posted it on the town's website and on social media. Um. I'll have to see if there's any other avenues that I can reach out to, but I'm trying to keep it down on advertising costs as well, I don't want to be that. So anything, great.
So do we have a process question about whether or not, since the Budget Committee?
Already voted.
Voted on this, whether or not we can increase it? Without the Budget Committee? Well, I think the point is we'd have to get back with the Budget Committee and and before June third.
That's, that's the process question, do we have that?
It's a process question, because I think we've probably got a, we have a quorum of the Budget Committee out there.
Shannon, are you happy? I mean, ultimately, you're gonna have to make this work, and so maybe that's how I should have started this all out. Are you happy with four thousand and thirty-five, one forty-eight? You're gonna have to make it work, and if you say, yep, that's what I want to do, and, uh. That's okay.
Well, given the discussions that. Well, given the discussions that the Select Board has had previously, I figured that I would try to make it work.
And we, but we have no, we have no ability to move from place to place here?
Yeah.
We can go within the box.
Within the box.
Then let's, uh, let's go.
Uh, so we wanted to make a motion or not?
I will, I so moved.
I moved that, that, that we want to uh, recommend approval of Article eight. Uh, on the appropriation of four hundred and three thousand and three dollars for general and administration.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Work.
Right. Well, we need to get a new to decide on this thing now.
So we. Oh. I think that'll be.
If you just wanna sign a back page, I'll take one that somebody has a clean coffee.
Okay, we'll do that.
After for us.
Oh, oh, right now.
Uh, public comments, yes, Amy.
Uh, so we have had to add an article um, regarding property tax levy limits. And it said LD one, one chief, uh, is that something, I didn't see it in the warrant this year, is it something that's still happening or do we? I know one year we had that especially found the end of the after.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Um, but I don't know if it's something that's been repealed last year. I just don't.
Amy, can you help me understand that a little bit more?
Um, so in previous years, there's been an article in the town branch that says, to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit. Of a certain amount of money established by the town by state law, in the event that the municipal budget approved under the preceding article. Results in a tax commitment that's greater than the current property tax limit, so. We only have, it, it needs to be in there and approved, but it, it doesn't need action if the town budget doesn't exceed the tax levy limit.
Right.
I remember that now.
So.
It was in last year's warrant, uh, it was, I'm looking at the one from twenty-twenty. Three or twenty, yeah, I only have the previous year.
Yeah.
But it was an article in last year as well.
We've always had to have it, we've always been over, so we had, always had to have the article in there. I think Amy's question is, is there something changed in the state where you don't have to do that anymore?
Right.
That's the question.
Right.
There's actually two questions, is one, is the law still in effect, and two, with the revaluation?
Right.
Do we still trip and trigger? But I think that the limit is a percentage of valuation.
Right. Yeah, I can't recall exactly what that percent is right now, it's like.
Mm-hmm.
Right. They did some work on, right, I remember having this discussion.
Then, you know, so just sent me something that said that it might have been repealed last August, I just wanna make sure.
Right, that's what, um, yeah. We may be reconvening. Based on the Lad Center.
Yeah.
Can we?
Yeah, we can.
Have an opportunity to review that and get the answers to those questions as well?
Yeah.
So. Makes sense.
Seems like.
Because I, I don't, I don't have the answers tonight, or I may, may unless she found something, if Shannon found something.
When I was thinking about, yeah, LD one, I think that that was repealed uh, last year.
Last year.
Yes, I think that, um, thinking about that, because that was the, the tax cap, and I do remember that, um, that was repealed, and that was a, a point of discussion with the presidential elections, and those were one of the biggest, bigger talking points, because. The property tax limit took off that levy, which is great for a municipality, because then it doesn't necessarily bind your uh, hands, and you're able to. Pro- provide services a little bit more, just trying to think about this um, real quick, um. Whereas if it, you have that tax levy limit, yes, you have to have an annual town meeting in order to then vote to exceed that. Um, but you don't have that town meeting, I believe, until after the taxes are committed, and those don't get committed until the end of July or August. And so if you did end up having another town meeting, that was probably why, but uh, I believe that got repealed last year.
Yeah, I just Googled it, and it said Janet Mills signs a bill repealing it.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Good question over here.
Thank you.
Wanted to make sure there wasn't anything missing. Took me a minute to remember.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, uh, other public comments? Okay. Uh, Town Manager.
Uh, so we did have, I think our meetings are scheduled for uh, the June third, and so um, since the warrant, we're planning on having that posted that day to meet the requirements. Uh, we would be looking at a June tenth meeting, although that is also the same day that there's the uh, voting from eight AM to eight PM. If we are able to locate or get another location, maybe at the school, would we be able to have that, because that would also allow us to vote on the next warrant and the payroll, um, which will be scheduled um. Later, like next week, I think on the fourth is when we process payroll, and then on the fifth is what we do with accounts payable, so then that would be available to approve on June tenth.
We're not gonna be done the third.
Correct.
Okay.
Are you okay with that, and then also, so the tenth, and I think it's the twenty-fourth.
So based on, based on, if we, if we meet on the tenth, which is the election night, or the town meeting?
Yeah.
That's the election for the town meeting.
Yeah.
One.
The concern I have is around the topic that we considered having at our next select board meeting around the Hundred Acre Wood, can we put?
Well, let's move that to one test.
That's just to make.
This, yes, yes.
It would basically just be approving the minutes and the warrant articles.
But because we conveyed to the audience, I think.
Right.
I think we should po- postpone the Hundred Acre Wood conversation, that's all I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
To expedite a meeting then.
The uh, the, the problem that. The, the way we sort of shuffled them to get an extra meeting in before the warrant, the way we shuffled them, that left us with only one meeting in the middle of June, unless we, unless we do something different, and it didn't work for any of the warrants. So. Shannon was wrecked, was suggesting the tenth.
Right.
And then the twenty-fourth.
Right.
And we can put the Hundred Acre Woods on for the twenty-fourth.
Okay, I think that would be better, so we have more time and op- opportunity for people to.
Yes, that would be, that's good. I, I, I don't think we wanna bring up the Hundred Acre Woods right before the town meeting.
Okay. So June ten.
Yep.
And we need to meet.
I'll, I'll call the school and see if, um, we can schedule that over there.
Okay.
The school's library or whatever.
Right.
Okay.
Did you have anything else?
No, oh, we.
Did you have anything else?
After, so then, so the tenth would be the meeting, then there's the annual town meeting continued on the eleventh, uh, and then the following one would be on the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And so my, my follow-up question, and the following Tuesday is July first, would that be your first to, you have two meetings in a row?
Well, that's a one week after the twenty-fourth, or the, yes, and I don't know if we wanna do that, or just that move to the. I think we should put it back on schedule for the next year, we'll just have a meeting one week later on July first.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, eventually, we gotta get back.
Yeah.
I think we're on, right now, as far as how it lines up with payroll and accounts payable.
Yeah.
That gives it till, to get approved on Tuesday, and then I send out checks on Wednesday.
So we have, we have the.
As of right now, I think it's fine, um, but.
Okay.
The eighth and twenty-second will be better.
Great.
Have you done select board comments?
No, no, yeah, I didn't, I wanted to make sure Shannon had, had additional.
And then, uh, so June tenth, uh, and then with our personnel policy, that's something I'd like to bring up at another point, um. Even though that just got revised a few years ago, one of the things in it is floating holidays. For personnel, and we're only open four days a week, so if a holiday falls on a Monday right now, then according to our personnel policy, our personnel are able to take another day off for the holiday. So with our short staff right now, and I feel like that would apply anytime, honestly, um. That allows our staff to take a, another day off, uh, and so it's been requested to take Friday, and so I was going to bring it up to the select board if you had any issue with closing on Friday this week.
Oh, you mean to the, the Memorial Day holiday, they wanna do it on Friday.
Yes, this Friday.
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of choice.
Okay.
Do we? If that's what is in the personnel policy.
Well, the personnel policy, I mean, it could be a different day, but it was requested on Friday, so I said I would ask on Friday, and then we were just.
What are you, what are you on?
I would like to revisit the personnel policy at some point, in the meantime, yes, understanding that we're just gonna have a, a shortage in personnel, um. I would not feel comfortable running the office entirely myself.
Yeah.
At those time.
Absolutely.
That's fine, can we, um. Yeah.
Okay.
As long as it's, I think it just notices, obviously, and then tomorrow morning or whatever.
I will, okay, that's, that's it then, so the office will be closed on Friday.
Do we, do we wanna give Shannon some instruction on when we wanna fill all these positions that are going vacant?
When?
When, this year or next year, by, by, I mean, before July or after July?
Trent said later.
Oh, you said later, you asked him, okay, no, that's good, okay, I didn't know you guys had that conversation.
I'm sorry, what?
Trent said what? All the appointments for additional.
Oh, you're talking about. Forward, yes, select board, board of, I didn't know you guys had that conversation.
Yeah, I misunderstood, I heard you talk about the treasurer.
No, no, that's where the.
I think generally, the historic practice is a new board sort of takes, takes that.
That's fine.
As a sort of a initiative.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think generally.
Yeah, I think we did it.
Seems to be like.
Meeting schedule.
Yeah. I, I, I generally speaking. From my experience.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about your, the positions that you are hiring.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Talk about committee. I misunderstood it too.
Yes, right, the committee appointments are always in the, in the, yeah.
The reason I ask is on July first, then you have vacancies.
Right.
Which won't be filled until we, you know, we do, but that's fine.
I'm putting that together, that draft right now of all of the vacancies and updated, updates, and that will be ready by the end of June, um, at least, if not sooner, but for voting. Around the end of June or beginning of July.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
So does that mean, I think we talked about, um. Soliciting interest to see if anybody is interested in any of those positions?
I think you put something out there in March.
Putting something out?
March.
Didn't you put something out there in March for all the, for any open committee meeting positions?
I'll check and see if we did, I didn't put anything on the website.
I thought you had, okay.
We've gotta go through and verify all, like, who. We've gotta verify with the people that are currently on those boards, and see if they're interested and was still going another year, or three years, or five, depending on their position.
Well, I'd love to make a, um, next March, do that process so that we could put it out there so people could consider it.
Yeah.
I was thinking that we've done that, but.
Well, we appointed an alternate to the, at some point in time, we appointed an alternate to the planning board that we did put out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, deals on that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I guess what we have to decide is. If you have a current member of the widget board who's term is up. Do we offer that, and that person wants to stay in, is that an automatic, or do we go and solicit uh, interest them all across the town? Say this is an open position. And that's, that's what we have to decide sometime, and would it, whatever. I don't have an opinion on it.
Right. July first, Henry?
No, July first is good, that's fine, yeah.
Dog, I'm teasing.
But, but, but what I'm more interested in is what do we do about current, about the, the, you know. Current person on the widget committee who, who says, yeah, I'd like to do this for another term.
And then someone else says, yeah, but I want a term.
Yes, yeah.
We should be sublet.
Yes, well.
Um, no, those are good points.
Has that ever come up?
I don't think it has, I don't remember, on occasion, I wanted to be.
It may have come up, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm transporting to another space at this point in the evening, uh, board member, other, other board members. Great.
I just have one.
Yeah, sure.
Just one thing, I met with the uh, solid waste um, and recycling committee, um. As I, as I noted when we talked about the budget, our, our uh, amount of appropriations is a little, is a little bit low, because everybody else's assessment went up more than ours did, so. It dropped us down in the uh, in the allocation slightly, the other thing is July thirteenth, which is a Sunday, from nine to twelve? Nine to twelve? Um, I look at you, Amy, because I know you've done it before, I think it's nine to twelve, um, but it will be noticed, there, there'll be the um. Um, communities able to, to get rid of household waste, special household waste, so that'll come out, but July thirteenth is the. That's it.
Great, other board members. Right. Yep.
Did you also want to mention that Wayne meet the candidates tonight on June second?
Yes.
That's a, that'll be, is that a thing here, yes, here, at six thirty PM on the second, so next Monday.
Which is what again?
The meet the candidates night, being put on by Wayne Presents here at the Lad Rec Center at six thirty PM.
Okay.
There are posters around and.
I'm over.
It gives, it gives Trent another meaning to go to.